Question regarding an agenda item. Would you please write down your name and the agenda item on the sheet? And at the start of question period, I'll call up those who've signed up to address council. We have a couple of late items, I understand, Ms. Gury?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. For Agenda Item 6E, we're adding Joanne Sales, Director of Broombuster's Invasive Plant Society, to provide an overview of Broombuster invasive plant society's work. And we're removing Item 6D Fernando Fuentes regarding Amrico's building at 1400 Wind Grove Street. And that's it, Your Worship.
Very good, thank you. A motion for adoption of the agenda as amended. Counselor Thorpe, seconded Counselor Bonner, all those in favor, motion carried, thank you. Everyone reviewed the minutes, motion for adoption of the minutes. All four, if we may, that's Counselor Hammond's move, seconded Counselor Martman, all those in favor. Opposed, motion carried, thank you. We don't have any presentations per se today, but we do have a number of delegations. And the first up is June Ross regarding Van Croyland Water Watch Coalition. Ms. Ross, I'm not going to start you just yet, just to remind everyone that I'm adhering religiously to the five-minute limit, and at four minutes I will give you the signal and a little orange light will go on to remind everyone. Please, thank you and welcome.
Thank you, and hi to all of you. It's nice to be in front of you once again. I was here a number of times in years past. So I'm here on behalf of Vancouver Island Water Watch Coalition. We presented to many of the island MLAs in April 2018, and that was thank you to our mayor, who was then the MLA for us. He helped me arrange that, and I'm greatly appreciative. From a legislative -- legislation perspective, our concern is with the Forestry Acts, the Mining Act, and the Water Sustainability Act. Changes are desperately needed. The Mining and Forestry Acts must be amended to state that water and its sources take precedence over mining and forestry. They currently do not. The Water Sustainability Act has few regulations developed. We need effective water governance in place now, not tomorrow, but now. There's growing concern and evidence among many local governments that widespread timber harvesting, specifically clearcutting, is driving significant financial and social costs onto local governments and the citizens they serve. Astonishingly, local government has no legislated role or decision-making power in the planning of timber harvesting, nor indeed in any aspect of timber harvesting, including its location, volume, rate of harvest, cumulative impact, et cetera. We hear every day how BC's timber supply is dwindling, yet cities, towns, municipalities, and regional districts are finding that more and more harvest activity is being performed near urban forest interfaces, within watersheds that are the sole source of drinking water for downstream communities, and within recreation and tourism areas that provide the lifestyle and tourism dollars that municipalities seek to enhance and encourage. Local governments are increasingly bearing the risks and cost of forestry activity, but have no regulatory power to ensure industry is not simply offloading their external costs onto local governments. What we are asking you to do is to join with us and write a letter to the ministries that are involved, and say to them that we want the following: Local governments are given the funding and authority to define critical local resources such as watersheds and recreation area, and doing so ensure these areas are treated differently in legislation compared to standard supply areas. Local governments have the funding and authority to become actively involved in long-term land and resource planning, especially with respect to forest harvesting. Local governments have the authority to influence, modify, and when necessary, prevent forest harvesting that demonstrably increases financial risk to local governments. Local governments have the authority to influence, modify, and when necessary, prevent forest harvesting that will demonstrably degrade recreation and tourism resources within their area and that all water sources be protected in perpetuity. I have two resolutions that I did send to all of you to have a look at. They're not etched in stone, but we think it's time that all of our local people, our local politicians, get in line with us and get busy, and I have to see if I can work this thing now. There, I wanted to show some of the pictures of some of the areas where clearcutting has occurred, and it isn't nice. And every morning I turn on my computer, and there's somebody with something new that's happening. It's devastating, in my view. There's going to be nothing left for my grandchild, nothing whatsoever. So that's it. We're asking you to please have a look at what I've said. You have the whole presentation there, I just did a summary. I'm open to questions. I sent it all too early enough to hopefully get some questions.
Thank you very much. Questions? Counselor Gesselbrock? Sorry, Counselor Armstrong, you beat Counselor Gesselbrock.
(Laughter)
I pushed my button.
And you both beat Counselor Bonner.
Thank you very much for your presentation and your concern. I just wanted to know if you've given this presentation to our First Nations groups on the island?
No, not yet, no. They're supposed to be involved along the way, and I understand all of that, but we've been trying for many years to get the SUNY name online with us and to be there to guide us, and it hasn't happened, so, no, it hasn't been done.
Thank you.
Counselor Gesselbrock?
Through the chair, thank you for your presentation. I was just curious, do you have any data, like empirical data, on the financial impacts as a result of this logging on municipal governments?
If you look even on just the island alone, and you look at the number of towns and villages that are forced to now put in water treatment plants, that will tell you a whole lot. Union Bay is one. They are being told that they have to have one, Port Alberni. It just, it goes on and on and on. Comox, we've had to have one here, and that's a lot of money that comes out of taxpayers' pockets, and we don't think that any of those would be necessary if our forests were left intact. I would suggest that for any of you who go out driving, you need to get out of your vehicles and look beyond the fringes, go beyond the fringes, fly over this island and have a look at it. You'll be astounded.
Anyone further? Ms. Ross, thank you very much for your continued adequacy, both personally and on behalf of Van Croyland Water Watch.
Okay, thank you.
The next is John DeCombe regarding active transportation routes. Mr. DeCombe, welcome.
Evening, afternoon. As you all know, I'm John DeCombe. So last month's snow events clearly demonstrated a host of shortcomings for the city in Nanaimo's response to snow and ice blocking active transportation routes and bus stops, but by my estimates, ninety percent of Nanaimo sidewalks and bus stops remained unclear through February snowfalls. The most egregious offender wasn't the little old lady who can't shovel, it was malls, major retailers, school District 68, industrial properties, and the city itself. And in many cases, those big property owners did a great job clearing their parking lots and roads while either ignoring the sidewalks a few feet away or actively blocking them. This meant school kids had to walk to school on busy streets, persons with disabilities and the elderly were trapped in their homes for days, and even healthy, able adults were forced into dangerous situations on busy streets. Luckily, nobody was killed this time. This was an opportunity for this administration to demonstrate that terms like "eight-to-eighty city," "complete streets," and "walkable cities" were more than just empty campaign slogans. The city's own policies claim that pedestrians, bicycles, and transit users should get priority over cars, but the reality during February's period of snow accumulation was the exact opposite as it always is. So here's the three ways that failure manifested itself. First, communications. It was only on Monday, February 11th, four days after the major, first major accumulation, that the city communicated anything telling residents and property owners that they needed to keep sidewalks clear. And that was buried at the bottom of a news release and did not mention that this is a mandatory bylaw requirement. The only other city communications were web statements on February 14th and 15th that again never mentioned that this is a bylaw requirement. And it was only on February 19th, eleven days after the first major snowfall and after extended public outrage and media coverage, that the mayor spoke publicly about this issue. Instead, the city's senior bylaw manager essentially admitted to Nanaimo News Now on February 15th that there would be no enforcement, overtly undermining a standing city bylaw. Rules without enforcement are pointless. Next, operations. Here's a photo of a city vehicle piling snow up around a bus stop along Stewart. The scene was repeated all over the city at bus stops, crosswalks, sidewalks, and bike lanes. I recognize the city does not have the capacity to clear all these things, but don't make an already bad situation worse by making it even harder for non-drivers to get around. And here's Bowen Road seven days after the first major snowfall. The city was diligent in clearing, clearing four lanes of roadway while about eight feet of sidewalks were left impassable. The city needs to consider balancing the requirements of pedestrians against the requirements of cars. Instead of plowing snow off the road and onto the sidewalk, why not plow so there are two or three lanes of traffic and at least one sidewalk? New operational protocols need to be explored by both staff and council. Finally, enforcement. Again, the city stated it would not be issuing tickets for this bylaw fence. This was an utter failure in changing noncompliant behavior, not to mention in revenue generation. Nothing will change these behaviors faster than financial penalties, and if people know there will be no financial penalties, expect no change in behaviors. That's human nature. I've lived in Nanaimo for three winters, and for every one of those years, there has been at least a week where sidewalks are clogged with snow. So this is a yearly issue, not a one-off. So how do we fix this so it doesn't happen again next year? Timely in communications with the public, timely in complete internal communications with your staff.
One minute, Mr. DeCombe.
Consistent messaging by senior managers and counselors, not undercutting your own city bylaws and policies. Considering new operational protocols that actually think about more than just cars. Enforcing existing bylaws, starting with those large property owners who have the capacity to easily fulfill their obligations, and most importantly, a real cultural shift. Empty statements and policies without action are useless. The city needs to actually start demonstrating a change of attitude, not just throw out empty platitudes. This period of snow was a perfect and missed opportunity to demonstrate a cultural shift. Let's hope next winter is different.
Thanks, Mr. DeCombe. Questions, anyone? Counselor Bonner?
Thank you, Your Worship. It's quite possible that if we were to enforce the bylaw, which I think we should be, it may require a lot more staff capacity and probably even capacity to clean sidewalks that mayor may not be able to be cleaned by the residents. I'm thinking Bowen Road might be a good example, where many of the places that are on Bowen Road that aren't commercial are residential, but they don't access their houses from the road. They access them from alleys. So those areas would never get, probably ever get cleaned. So would you be in favor of us increasing staff to manage these ones?
I don't actually think you need to increase staff. What we're seeing in Nanaimo with all bylaw enforcement is it's complaint-based, it's not proactive. So there's a lot of reaction, there's a lot of driving around, dealing with complaints, not just with snow enforcement, which means you have a lot of people busy, not accomplishing a lot, not accomplishing much because they're not issuing tickets, very low, I'll be presenting to you guys in the coming months on this specific issue, actually, compared to other cities in BC, a very low rate of revenue generation compared to work. So we have bylaw officers working very hard, but they're not bringing any revenues and they're not changing any behaviors. Bowen's a great example, I'm glad you raised that, because there's seventy-seven houses that may or may not have frontage on Bowen, sidewalk frontage, because like you say, some of them are off sidewalks. But on that strip, you've got two major city parks that weren't cleared during the snowfall. You've got multiple malls, you've got a few large condo developments, you've got a lot of industrial. None of those people, almost none of those people cleared their sidewalks this year, and there was apparently no enforcement of that. I don't think you need to hire more officers to enact proactive enforcement against a few large property owners. As for the city, which is one of the most egregious offenders, I think you've only got two sidewalk plows. I believe I'm correct in that. And my question would be, before you spend more money on infrastructure, on equipment, how many hours were those two plows used during the snow event? It's kind of like a hospital with an MRI machine. They don't buy more MRI machines, they run the existing equipment longer. So if you've got limited equipment capacity, when you need to, you need to start running that equipment more often instead of buying new equipment. That'll increase your labor costs, obviously. It's a lot cheaper to pay people overtime to be working eighteen hours a day than to buy a $300,000 snowplow. So I don't know, did I answer your question?
I think so, thanks.
Thank you, anyone else?
Do you have a question of staff, not of the delegation?
Appropriate, Ms. Gury? Ask staff?
You can, if there's no more questions for the delegation, then the delegation could have a seat first.
Thank you. No questions further for Mr. DeCombe? Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Bonner?
Thank you, Your Worship. I don't have any bylaw people here, so I'm not sure if the questions will be answered. And I've thought about this before, we have a policy, I think, and I'm not even sure it's a policy, that we, our bylaws are by complaint. And I was kind of wondering when that decision was made, or if it is an actual policy, or is it just because we don't have enough staff to proactively go out and do that?
I'm attempting to respond to that. So it's a resourcing issue, and if you're going to be enforcing, you need to be enforcing consistently, so simply the vast capacity of the municipality and being able to be out there. So I guess there could be targeted enforcement, and this is an issue for council discussion. It's not that, this similar to people cleaning up after their pets and parks and so forth. I mean, there are not bylaw officers watching every park all the time, there's sort of a voluntary compliance piece to that. So it is normal for municipalities, in the most part, to have a, respond to complaints basis and have a bylaw and a policy in place that enables that to take place. In this case, and again, it's a, it's a unique event, it's, we're not used to having these long-protracted snow events, so we're not resourced up to cover the most significant of those events. We are resourced up for the average, and so if the question is around bylaw enforcement, right now we're equipped to do, you know, advisories and that type of thing, and we did do the communication piece here, as you recall, before in the fall, there was a presentation made to council on what the city's policies are with respect to the streets and the parks. We are short on that communications function, you're aware of that, we're now in the process of engaging a new communications capacity, and I expect that's a fair comment, that we need to be more on our game with that, and I believe we will be in the future. But in terms of the enforcement piece, and in our practice of deploying equipment and so forth, Mr. Sims could probably explain the resources that are available and used. I think that would be a good clarification, if he's able to do that on the sidewalks and where that takes place, and what the priorities are with respect to the public domain on the sidewalks and pathways and that type of thing. So it's one of those conversations, I think, that council has identified through the active transportation discussions that is part of it, it's not only the snow on the sidewalks, it's the sand in the bike lanes, and it's, you know, the number of bike lanes and so forth. So as we ramp up our capital side, we are going to have to wrap up our operating side, so there's, there's a lot of pieces to it. So I, you know, I think some of the comments are fair, but some of them are, you know, it's outside of, it was a rare and significant event, we had over sixty centimeters in two days. We're not well-equipped to handle that, to be honest. It's just the way it is, but, you know, we could certainly resource ourselves up. I'd suggest, if I could ask Mr. Sims to speak on the staffing and the procedures around the street rights of way, that would be useful.
Mr. Sims, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, as Mr. Rudolph indicated, we were working twenty-four hours a day for the duration, for about a week and a half, the duration of the snow, and then follow-up as well. And that included our park staff, who were busy clearing the major commuter ways, like the E&amp;N Trail and the waterfront walkway, and some select areas in the downtown core as well. Parks do clear their, or their contractors clear, you know, major parking lots of the rec centers, as well as sidewalks around and fronting the city rec centers. So I'm surprised to hear Bowen Road in front of Bevan Park was not, was not clear, because I think that would be one of the ones within parks priority one or two, which council's familiar with. So I'm not sure what else to say, other than, you know, with three hundred and something kilometers of sidewalk, you know, both enforcement and clearing of those sidewalks, if council chose to fund that kind of effort, would still not keep up with a hundred percent, we'd still not get to the last mile, so to speak. A number of the complaints that we received were from people in cul-de-sacs, people on smaller residential streets. Why isn't my street piled? Why isn't my sidewalk cleared? Why haven't you picked up my garbage? And those are always the last ones, because we need to focus on the emergency routes, we need to make sure fire, police, ambulance, transit are getting through on those routes. So it's a similar discussion with sidewalks, if you say, well, which sidewalks do you want to clear first? Well, we can establish priority routes, but we're not going to do three hundred kilometers unless we resource to some ridiculous level. And the enforcement piece is similar, as Mr. Rudolph intimated, it's which is the priority? The big offenders, sure, that's, that's great, but it's, that inconsistent enforcement is really challenging.
Counselor Hammond?
Thank you, through you to staff. I want to start by saying that I do not support further resourcing of our snow removal equipment, because as the presenter shared, this happens about one week a year. And for me, I think the staff did an amazing job of coping with, with what was a huge snow event that we typically don't see. I also, you know, my, my children walk to school on the streets and I rode my bike. This is coming from Halifax, this is a fact of life for most Canadians, and we could probably improve operationally what we're doing. Communications, I agree, the city could probably be a bit more proactive, and we're on that. Enforcement, I think, again, like Mr. Rudolph said, it really is a matter of resourcing and where we want to put our funds. But operationally, I am curious about those two sidewalk snow clearers, and were they also operated like the snowplows twenty-four hours a day?
Your Worship, my understanding, Mr. Harding would be able to confirm, but my understanding is they were working many hours a day, maybe not twenty-four.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Bonner?
Thank you, Your Worship. More or less, maybe just a comment, if we were going to try to do the enforcement, I would think probably the best place to start would be the commercial entities, because they already pay to have their parking lots plowed and that. And I remember being in Windsor for a while, doing snow removal for a company, and we had to do both those things. We had to plow the parking lots, and we had to plow the sidewalks. And I want to thank my wife for shoveling our sidewalk on Northfield, right? But it was the only one on Northfield that got plowed, and I ended up, when I was going to the bus, having to walk down Northfield, which is pretty dangerous. Only, and I want to thank the Columbia Bakery for shoveling their sidewalks. Unfortunately, when I got to one section, they had plowed all the snow up onto the sidewalk, and I had to walk out on the Bowen to get to the bus stop. So I think these are some of the issues, but I, if it's just a question of putting somebody in a car and driving around twenty-four hours after a snowfall and writing down commercial addresses, it would be a start anyway, because those typically are the places where most people will do walking to get to grocery stores and stuff like that. Anyway, my thought.
Thank you. The next delegation, oh, sorry? Counselor Gesselbrock, you just slid in there.
Through the chair to Mr. Sims. Just a question, too, on operationally, in terms of operator awareness of, you know, when you're, you're moving the snowplow and you've got to like deposit, you know, a big chunk that you've sheared off, not to do it like right in front of a...
Handicapped parking.
Yeah, or a bus stop, and those little minor things that are just habit that make sure that everybody's on the same page, that they're watching out for those things. Do you know if there is any sort of education and awareness around that, given that maybe it just might not be on folks' radar at two o'clock at night while they're, you know, plowing the city streets?
Worship, it's a good question. I think for, for the most part, it's, it's never deliberate, it's like we often get the classic scenario where I've just shoveled my driveway and a plow comes along and fills it back in, but there's very little control over exact placement of snow. But I will mention that, you know, every sort of major event, similar to this one, staff kind of get together and say, what can we do better? How can we do things differently? So we're reassessing some of the priorities, especially on the parks. Do we need to plow certain parking lots? Maybe not, maybe we can shift those to some more of the major bus routes and help out that way. So there's always that reassessment and adjustment ongoing.
Counselor Armstrong?
Thank you, and through Your Worship to Mr. Sims, and I too want to echo Counselor Hammond's comments. I thought your staff did a great job with the short period of time and how much snow we actually got. One question I did have, and I don't know if it's possible or not, but I know a lot of us were trying to keep our drains open. Is there a place we could call to find out where our drains are placed on the streets? So that we can help with that, so we don't flood?
Worship, that's an excellent communication, or point, we actually put a communication out regarding clearing drains, but as you pointed out, the drains are buried, and so if you haven't memorized the location, we should look, look at some way of marking the street in the fall with removable paint where some of the critical drains are. Our drainage crews do scramble shortly after a snowfall to make sure that the notorious drains that can cause flooding are cleared.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, you're going to correct me if I mispronounce your name, it's Raul Court, regarding next-generation wireless, the internet, and the city of Nanaimo, and please correct me if I've mispronounced your name.
Thank you, Your Worship, councilors, ladies and gentlemen. This morning I read that a lot of native English speakers are faking their accents to make their presentation more interesting. I can guarantee that my accent is authentic. My name is Raul Court, I'm with the Great Northern Engineering Consultants. Development in the telecommunications industry and the densification of municipalities requires a long-term strategy to cope with this situation for the benefits of your businesses and your We at GNEC have a passion to help your, the communities and the cities in British Columbia to be more sustainable and strive, and we thank you very much for the time that you allocate us so that we can talk about this. The knowledge economy is the economy in which people and computers and internet are working together and compete in the worldwide world. computers and internet are working together and compete in the worldwide world. The knowledge economy represents about 20% of the GDP of OECD countries. It has been acknowledged that the internet and the speed and affordability is really the basis to support this knowledge economy. We in Canada rank fourth in most expensive and 20 in speed. We need to do something about that. And the only thing to do, what we can do about it is to create more competition in the market. And how can we create more competition in the market? Well, that is to provide a cable, a fiber-optic cable between service providers and their businesses and residents in Nanaimo. Nanaimo can monetize this fiber-optic cable by leasing them to the service providers and on the same time attract businesses out of the lower mainland to come over to Nanaimo. For the municipalities we helped, the results were spectacular. We reached from two service providers to eight service providers. We multiplied the speed from five times and we reduced significantly the cost. This is an example for a gigabit connection for businesses. This is an example for residential, $99 for a gigabit connection. And this is the one I prefer. This is one of the offerings of the ISPs in New Westminster that offers a gigabit for $79. Phones are involved and so are the networks to support them. Telecommunication providers will be upgrading their wireless network into 5G in your community for the next years. The mobile devices are going to have gigabit speeds and these gigabit speeds requires antennas every 100 to 300 meters in the street. The best location for these kind of antennas are on the streetlights and on the buildings. And probably already the incumbents, the telecommunication operators have contacted you to access these streetlights. These streetlights need to be connected with fiber-optic cables to transmit a huge amount of data back to the network. The incumbents will install these fiber-optic cables or you can monetize the streetlights, the building space for antennas and the fiber-optic cables that you are building already for the knowledge economy. Our cities are becoming more and more crowded and it puts a lot of strain on the infrastructure. Some cities are looking at the Internet of Things. Sensors, smart sensors installed everywhere that measures flexion, that measures count, that measures pollution, that measures water.
Just in a minute now.
And the data that can be mined and mined, we can make decisions about the data that we receive to make educated decisions. Sensors all over the city are connected with fiber-optic cables and allows you to make educated decisions for your management. We at GNEC would like to play a part in defining what I call a long-term fiber strategy to connect up the businesses and residents to the knowledge economy, to help you lease out and connect up the 5G antennas and connect them up with fiber-optic cables, to connect the sensors that's going to provide you data to make long-term decisions and make some savings in the operational cost. This is what we would like to propose, working with you for a long-term strategy for a fiber network that will last at least 15 to 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was perfect timing. I'm looking at Counselor Bonner because he's the, probably the most adept in this topic.
Well, it's something I campaigned on. Tell us, Telus just made an announcement just last week regarding fiber optics cable to all the homes and businesses in Nanaimo. Is that a competitor of yours or are they, or are you working with them?
No, it is not competition. Consider the fiber-optic cable as a road that you provide to everybody to use. Currently, when Telus installs a fiber-optic cable, it can only use, you can only buy the services from Telus over that cable. What we propose to do is that the city propose a fiber-optic cable between two locations, the service provider and the end user, and they can provide the services they want. The end user can choose any service provider they want. In the case of Telus, it's not possible. When the cable enters your business or enters your home, you can only choose the Telus business services.
So who would be responsible then for laying the cable?
That would be the city. The city will lay the cable. You already have a lot of fiber-optic cables through the city. You have some areas that I looked up that are businesses that can be connected up. The service providers you have seen in my presentation are just waiting to municipalities to install these fibers. Coquitlam has been very successful. We started in 2007 and they are now running an open-access network that generate $800,000 a year with eight service providers active on it. New Westminster started a couple of years ago and has 140, up to 140 buildings connected with fiber optics for the services that you see over there. So it is not a question we build and maybe they will come. No, it is already, we know that if you build a fiber-optic network, these small service providers, other than the Telus and the Shaw's, will certainly come and lease the fiber from you.
Thanks.
Through the chair.
I've got a, I've got a few questions. The first, your company would provide, help us build the strategy of setting up a fiber-optic network, but you don't provide the service of laying the cable and that.
No. But basically, what we would provide you, a business case that would identify which area you want to install fiber optics. We would identify the businesses that might be interested and we would help you find the service providers that will sell directly to these businesses. The company I work for does the fiber design, does the civil design to bring the fiber into cable and we do the termination of these fibers. We design that stuff. We are totally agnostic regarding vendors, service providers. We design for the city because of the city wants to connect from point A to point B with fiber optics.
Excellent. And follow-up on that. So would that be building off the cable that Telus is bringing into the city? Or is this, is this the cable, the fiber-optic network that you're talking about just within the city? Or do we have to be connected to another central node somewhere?
No, no. You have already an fiber-optic network and I propose that you use that as your backbone to backhaul the data to a colocation center where the service providers will have their equipment. It is a service provider's responsibility to bring the data all the way to the internet exchange in Vancouver. So I propose that we enhance the existing fiber-optic network of the city, make it what I call carrier-grade, meaning that it is reliable, and identify together with service providers where the businesses are that we can connect up. And there is a business case to be made. $400 a month is what the businesses are paying for a fiber, dark fiber connection to the city of Coquitlam, to the city of New Westminster and to the city of Campbell River for that. On top of that, the service providers leasing the fiber from the city provide the services on top of that. So for example, the $900 for a gigabit connection means that $400 is for the fiber-optic cable that is paid to you and the $400 is for the service providers to provide the gigabit connection. That's the way it works. And if the end user wants to use another service provider, it's easy to do. They just say, I want to connect somebody else. And the city would plug one ISP into another port and the end user has the choice. And that is the beauty of an open-access network. As an end user, you can choose between service providers, like you do on the market. You don't have to have only two to choose from.
A few more questions. So with 5G wireless network, you are required to have these relay stations, these satellites, in much higher density on streetlights and whatnot to get info from all these sensors and areas to the fiber-optic network?
Yes.
I know in the past, I remember when I was at university, you know, 15 years ago, 12 years ago, however, a long time, but there's a lot of things around the health impacts of the radio frequencies and that. And I haven't heard much about that since, but I know that it's, the frequencies are much stronger and higher frequency now with this 5G network. And is there any research in that before we go putting these things on our streetlights around that?
Well, I think you would have not so much choice because the incumbents will install their 5G antennas anyway. And it is not so much of a concern of them because they are supported by the Health Code of Canada. I think it is Chapter 6 that deals with radio frequencies and that dictates the amount of power and under which frequency such antenna can transmit. And as well, the Internet of Things, what is all these smart centers, as the 5G antennas are all complying with this regulation. So there is a warning among the public over radio frequencies. I've heard it quite often, but there is a federal service, Health Canada, that deals with that.
I don't feel entirely safe around that, but I do understand there's a federal agency. The other question I have is in terms of what type of sensors have municipalities been setting up, like for collecting data initially that you've seen in other municipalities? That sort of helps with municipal infrastructure and that?
Sensors I've seen is flood sensors that allows to warn public that certain areas are, that water is rising and that they need to do something to bring their properties in a safe, in a safe area. I've seen sensors on bridges and in roads that measure vibrations. I've seen pollution for noise, for water pollution, but as well air pollution that warns the public. And there are sensors that again be put in the road that will warn the public about icing sections of certain streets in the city. And these are all services that can be made available through the, what I call the Internet of Things, the smart sensors. And for that, you will need a fiber-optic infrastructure to backhaul all this data so it can be processed and made available to the residents and the businesses.
Great. Thank you very much.
Counselor Bonner?
Thank you, your worship. This is less of a question, more of a statement. I think we're talking here, the philosophical reasons of, do we want as a municipality to become involved in providing internet access? I'm quite of the opinion that I look at this as a utility as we develop our society. And I think the best people to provide this service would be the city. So that's something I would like, that's a conversation I think we should have in the very near future. The building a high, a digital infrastructure in our cities is paramount to attracting the kind of businesses that I think would do well in this area. And that's the high-tech industries, gaming industries, that sort of programmers. And to do that, we need this digital background. You're talking about smart streetlights. We're already in the process of installing some of them that are capable of these modules and these sensors. And I think it's something we really need to have a plan moving forward because I think the opportunities are phenomenal. I want to thank you for presenting this, your presentation, and I look forward to in the near future conversations along this line. Thanks.
Thank you.
Very good.
I have some handouts for you here all night.
Thank you.
Counselor Armstrong, please. Counselor Bonner, thank you. Counselor Brown, Counselor Kesselbrock, thank you. There's our hands.
Me?
Thank you. Counselor Martin, that's a really Dutch name, by the way.
It is.
It is. Counselor Sorensen?
Yes, thank you.
And Counselor Turley?
Thank you.
And I'd like to follow you. Thank you very much, your worship. Counselors, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for your time today.
Very good, thank you. The next is the addition, Joanna Sales regarding Broombuster Invasive Plant Society. Ms. Sales?
Good evening. Good afternoon, mayor and counselors. I'm Joanne Sales. I'm the director and the founder of Broombusters Invasive Plant Society. We started in 2006 in Qualakin Beach and last year we had over 500 volunteers cutting broom for 5,000 hours on East Vancouver Island. Why do people do that? Why do they care so much? Here's an example. This was, the yellow field you see there was a forest that was cut down. The broom moved in and the forest will not regrow there again. You have a handout, I believe, that has this information, so I'm going to move pretty fast. It's an alien invasive plant, doesn't belong here, spreads rapidly, forms dense thickets, crowds out native plants, leads to loss of diversity, prevents forest regrowth, and is highly flammable. I think that, you know, that's the two most important things for us to think about right now. It's toxic, takes over farm forests and parkland. This is a photo from Nanaimo. Broom on vacant property makes the city look ill-kept and gives people severe allergies. It takes over. When it moves in, it takes over. Spreads rapidly. You can see a single plant and then a few years later you see a few more. And then you have what we end up with, like on inland, island highway, under the VC hydro lines. On any disturbed soil in the sun, broom wins. Okay? It's more powerful than any of our native plants. Our forests are in danger. Faster-growing broom strangles the young trees. Climate change makes it worse with our hot, dry summers, wildfires, severe storms. It will be difficult for our forests to grow back in balance and good health. We have to preserve the forest we have and protect the young trees from scotch broom. How bad does it get? Well, these are examples of in New Zealand where the broom has taken over everything. And that could happen here. Okay? Unless we stop it, that is what will happen here. Broom grows huge, quickly. Okay? You can see my foot is right there next to that stump and you see the size of the broom that the people are moving. Broom strangles native plants. These are the top or two photos of Nanaimo volunteers. And then we have the search and rescue helping on a steep cliff at Topbridge Regional Park. Here's a serious concern is scotch broom is a volatile flash fuel. Okay? If you look to the bottom of this, you'll see that this was a controlled burn. And I see that little man and the little fire truck there. And this is what happens when a fire hits scotch broom. And broom looks like, you see the plants on the left there, those are, in the summertime, that's what scotch broom looks like. Okay? So it's not just that it's this pretty green plant. Okay? Scotch broom is a volatile flash fuel. It will increase the wildfires' fuel load, escalate fires' intensity, compromise fire situations, and make fires more difficult to fight. And one of the RDN directors said that fighting the Nanaimo Lakes Fire last year was made worse by the presence of the scotch broom that is growing there prolifically. Broom on utility corridors creates an easy path for fire to travel across the island. This should not be tolerated. Think about that Yellow River becoming a dry, flammable river again in the summer. Two myths that we can't stop broom, it's false. Okay? You can do it. People were doing it wrong. They were digging them out, pulling them out. You need to cut it. The roots are not the problem. The seeds are. The other falsehood was that broom is naturalized. No, broom is not done spreading. It will continue until we look like New Zealand and other places on the planet. So communities are taking part now. This is a list of all the communities and currently taking part. Here's what's been going on in north Nanaimo or Nanaimo in general. Volunteers have cleared. I'm not even going to go through all of these things, but there's a lot that has been done. People don't see the broom when it's gone. It's just gone. In central Nanaimo, the woman there you see in front of the big pile, she's the one that brought Broombusters here in 2009. Okay? And a lot has been cut off the Nanaimo Parkway Trail, around the tourist bureau. All of this has been done by Broombusters.
One minute.
Broombusters have cleared or helped clear 33 parks. And we're partnering with VIU, Bill's Place, different places like that. So this is all going on. It's probably, nobody knows it, you know, but we need more volunteers. Here's our key strategies. You cut the broom in bloom, which means middle of April to the end of May. Containment, you don't go to the worst areas, but rather you stop the spread and make roads broom-free or parks broom-free. Stop the spread and that requires preserving trees and ground cover. Okay? And cooperation. Fortunately, in Nanaimo, we have a wonderful parks department and we do several cuts with them a year. The three greatest threats to biodiversity. Number one is climate change now, and that wasn't even on the list a few years ago, but now it's number one. Development and invasive plants. And we are the only ones who can protect our islands. We brought the invasive plants here. We're the ones that have to take care of them. So what do we ask of council? Actually, the worst, the most thing is more funding for chipping up the broom on the roads. The parks department can take care of what's being cut on the, in the parks, but we need help from probably a small chipping company. We'd like some signs. We'd like some more education. And if we could put some signs up, then Nanaimo residents will know that the city does want to get rid of it.
I'm going to be ruthless because I have to be fair to everybody. Thank you. You're well past your five, but I'm sure we'll have some...
Oh, it says it right here. Oh, I see it's going over. I was looking at that going, okay, 28 seconds, sorry.
So I'm sure we have some questions. Counselor Turley?
Thank you, your worship, through the delegation. The question I have is the timing of the cutting. I understand after, why it couldn't be cut earlier in the year?
I understand after, why, why it couldn't be cut earlier in the year, other than weather, and, and why it couldn't be cut in the fall?
Wait, you know what? I didn't understand you, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, I'll, I'll try again, sorry. With regard to when the cutting takes place, I understand why it's done April, May, because you want to get there before the seeds are formed, but I'm wondering why, or maybe it's already been done, it could not be done in the fall and perhaps earlier than April?
Okay, it doesn't die if you cut it when the ground is wet, because then it has time for the plant to, to come back. If you cut it, well, the seeds are above the ground and before the seed pods form, but then you have the dry summer heat. So then the roots die during the summer. If you cut it in November, then, you know, it has the winter to heal.
Councillor Martin.
Thank you. I just have a question. I wish it wasn't so invasive, because I actually find it very pretty, but then I like dandelions too, so.
I like dandelions.
But why, why do you say, when you cut it, that you're not to disturb the dirt? So like, if I was out walking somewhere and saw a little broom plant, I should just cut it, not?
Well, it depends on the time of year. If you can pull it out of the ground and it doesn't disturb the soil, that's fine. But a single plant makes eighteen thousand seeds that live in the soil for thirty to forty years. So if you disturb the soil, then the, the broom seeds will sprout, and instead of having one plant, you will have fifty.
Right, of course. Thank you.
Councillor Gesselbrock.
Through the chair, Ms. Sales, thank you very much for your presentation. Just curious, I remember growing up in Nanaimo and seeing a lot of Scotch broom, and I know this campaign of eradicating it's been going on for a long time, and have participated in numerous broom removal parties. I'm curious, do you know if we've made headway in reducing the amount of broom in this region? Because I get a sense that there is a little bit less.
There's actually quite a bit less than there used to be. In the, in the regions where people are cutting broom, we're making good progress. The, the problem is in the forested area, the wildlands, you know, it's just like where people are not there to cut it, that's where it's out of control. So you see, when, when there's a clear cut, it's going to be covered with Scotch broom. Okay? That's, that's one of the tragedies of clear cutting, because there's nobody up there to stop it, you know, unless we pass some laws and say, you, you cannot let the broom take over. So in the municipalities, in where people are living, we're making great progress. Okay? There's like, Qualakin Beach is almost broom-free now, and it had broom all over the place. And in Nanaimo, I'd like to make a map of all the places where there was broom, and now there is no broom, because it's a huge difference too.
Wonderful, and just to follow up on that, clear, what, what were the, the things that you were requesting?
Okay. There's not enough funding to, the, the parks department is always totally stressed out to get rid of the amount of broom that the volunteers cut. And they're saying, we can do what is cut in the parks, but we, we need some more funding to get it off the roads in time, you know, which is, it has to get off the roads because it's flammable. So a small chipping company, like a lot of municipalities are using something like We Chip Cowichin, it's just a single or two people, small truck, it's not like the big Davies truck, you know, because it's much more appropriate and a lot less expensive to come in and just get rid of it. So it's not, not a huge amount of funding that would be needed to do that and take the stress off the parks department. And then signs, the reason why we want signs is for, for telling people that they can come out and they can help cut broom, and, you know, they will be able to then learn about it and learn to do it right on their own property. And there is a bylaw, thank you, Nanaimo, you have one of the first bylaws that, so complaint-driven, we are complaining sometimes, and we are helping people get rid of it when they cannot do it themselves.
Thank you. Councillor Martin.
Thank you. Through the chair. Councillor Gesselbrock actually asked the question, but so following up on, you were saying signage and that, but communication, letting the city know that, that would help as well, correct?
Yes, that would help a lot. And it's, and some of the, the other municipalities, they, they put it on their website, and they put, you know, things. The parks department tries to promote Broombusters, but I think if it was, if people knew that the city actually wants to get rid of it, you know, then, then that would help a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and we could, I'd love to talk to staff about how that could be done, because I don't know what all the options are.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, Councillor Armstrong, I was about to put you on, and you hit the button, so you have to leave me in charge, or you're going to be cut off now.
I didn't think I hit the button, thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation, all the work you do. You said that you were looking for some dollars, did you have an amount?
You know, I, I think it would probably be less than, it'd be like a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars to, to get a chipping company to, to come in and, and remove it, as opposed to having city workers. So that's not that bad when you consider how much would, would be accomplished, so much cheaper than having city workers do it.
Thank you very much, and thanks again for all your work.
Thank you.
Any further questions for the delegation? I just want to thank you and your many volunteers, I do appreciate it. I don't find it quite as attractive as Councillor Gesselbrock. And it, it certainly, as you've well pointed out so eloquently today, it's a, a great damage to our ecosystem generally, so thank you. Very much appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for staff on this one? No? Very good. The next is reports. Request to install peace pole in Pirate's Park. Mr. Harding, please.
Thank you, Worship. Just a, a presentation or a report from a group on Protection Island that'd like to install a peace pole, staff supportive of it, as also, there's also two letters of support from island organizations, and we're just looking for council's approval to give the group the authority to install the pole.
Thank you very much. Councillor Hemmings is moved, seconded by Councillor Bonner. Councillor Bonner.
Thank you, Worship. It's through you to staff. Is this on city property that we're putting this up?
Your Worship, to Councillor Bonner, yes, it's at Pirate's Park on Protection Island.
Pirate's Park, okay, thanks.
Councillor Gesselbrock.
Anything for peace is cool, so I support this for sure.
Any further discussion? I think this is an easy one. All those in favor? Contrary, motion carried unanimously. No correspondence, Ms. Gury? Any other business? Noting none, question period. Thank you, Ms. Gury. I was going to say, Ms. Ross, you, you, you're it for six C and A.
Yes, okay. Hi again. Councilman Gesselbrecht had indicated there was little knowledge, I think, around the table about 5G. And if you want information, get to me, I'll send you everything you need, as dangerous as hell, the electronic, electromagnetic emissions are not good from it, so I would encourage you to really, really think about things before you go ahead with that. On six A, I'm wondering, am I going to have you writing a letter or doing resolutions for UBCM?
Councillor Martin.
Hi, through the chair to Ms. Ross. As we just learned this morning, watershed protection is actually under the RDN. We service the water. So I understand you might be making the presentation, or you are making the presentation to the RDN as well.
I am doing that tomorrow, but I think that it still can come from you as well. I mean, it is the Nanaimo watershed, and I think that's a bit of an opt-out from my perspective from all of you here, if that's what you're saying to me. I think everybody who is interested in protecting our forests, and protecting our watersheds, and protecting our environment, period, needs to be on side with us.
And if I may follow up, I, I understand what you're saying. I think when it comes to our stewardship and our water protection and aligning it with our strategic planning, that we're needing more time as we work through all of these issues.
I think what Councillor Martin was.
I'm not pleased. I mean, I've been here before you guys so many times on water, on watershed issues, and it's always the same things. Annie, I know you weren't here before, but it's always the same thing, and it's most discouraging when we're involved with so many other groups across the province, not just across the island, but across the province, and they're all suffering, and it's going to take a, a big load of us to get this government to move. It will absolutely take that. They have started, but it's very minute.
Ms. Ross, it, it is, it is question period, so I'm, I'm not cutting you off per se, but let me just say this, that I appreciate you may have presented to previous councils. This is not the previous council by any stretch, apart from two survivors, and, and I'm sure we'll take into consideration what you have asked tonight, as well, Ms. Martin has advised you, Councillor Martin, around jurisdictional issues involved in the regional district. I don't disagree with what you've suggested around letters of support, but to give us time to consider it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. No procedural motions? Motion to adjourn? Councillor Hemmings, seconded Councillor Bonner. All those in favor? Motion carried. Thank you very much, everyone.